Good evening. I'd like to call the Wednesday, February 14, 2024 Douglas Plan and Board Meeting to order. Time is 7:00 PM. First item on the agenda, A and Rs. We do not have any A and Rs. Moving right along to public hearings for 7:00 PM for Travis Derazio for application for special permit, SP-240108, converting one family to two-family, 17 Depot Street, possible votes. Yep. Are you presenting? Is anyone presenting for you? Or are you presenting it?
Just me.
Okay. Yep, come on up. I just got to read the notice of the public hearing. Date and time of public hearing, Wednesday, February 14, 2024, at 7:00 PM, subject to the matter hearing. The applicant has requested approval from the Douglas Plan and Board pursuant to the Douglas Zone bylaws, Section 9.3 and 7.1, conversion to two-family or multifamily dwelling. Project description, applicant would like to, would seek relief to allow a single-family home to be converted to a two-family home. Project site and location, the project is located at 17 Depot Street, Douglas, Mass. Assessors map 163, parcel 9. Place of public hearing, Douglas Municipal Center, Resource Room, 29 Depot Street, Douglas, Mass. Any person interested or wishing to be heard should appear at the time and designated place designated. Visit dougasmass.gov for the agenda and Zoom information. Copy of application is available for review during business hours. In the Douglas Community Development Department, 29 Depot Street, Douglas, Massachusetts, 01516. Jacob Scholzberg, Chair, Douglas Plan and Board. Public hearing is now open. All right, Travis, can you just give us a rundown of what we're looking at here?
Sure.
Just say your name and address, sorry.
Trap store, Sardo, 6 Peter Street, Uppsbridge. Property at 17 Depot Street in Douglas.
Okay.
We have the architectural plans and the plot survey. Property is actually right down the street, 17 Depot Street. We are coming before tonight for the application for the special permit to convert it to, from a single family to a two-family. The zoning is village residential. That's why I'm here. There are other multi-families in the area. There's one right across the street, so I don't feel that this will affect the walking and field of the neighborhood. There's going to be no changes to the existing foundation. As far as the elevation, on the left rear, there will be a small dormer that's noted on the plans, but, you know, nothing major. The driveway has been extended or widened already to conform to the required guidelines. This work was already done prior to the permit being issued so that it would be properly documented on the required site survey. We will be adding a retaining wall. If you've driven by or looked at, it looks like a light way cut into the land.
Yeah.
So we're going to make it prettier. We've taken down a lot of trees, trying to open it up and mess for a wrap.
Okay.
Town, outer town sewer.
All right. Mr. Benoit, comments on this?
Sure. So, yes, according to our use table, this requires a special permit from the planning board for the yard district. One thing of note, this is a pre-existing non-conforming lot since it has insufficient frontage. However, speaking with the building inspector, since there is no change to the foundation and we're converting the use, he doesn't see an issue. There is a deck that's going to be added on to the back, but that does not encroach the setback, so it doesn't increase the non-conformity of the structure. So zoning-wise, I don't have any issues with this. But my one recommendation is since this kind of already started, I recommend that they submit an as-built once it's completed.
Okay. Of the ad, if you can just explain where you would be, okay.
Yeah.
So once everything's done, should this get approved, just as-built? If you can, I don't know if, who you would might talk to for that. Steven, copy, maybe?
Norman Hill.
Hmm?
Talking to Norman Hill.
Okay.
Engineer.
Engineer. Yeah. So the engineer. All right, board, any questions, comments, concerns?
Up through the chair, I just have a question about the frontage. So on the plan, it talks about village residential being, needing 150 feet of frontage, but then under that, it's talking about the proposed addition frontage at 134. Is the frontage 99 as based on the plan? I'm just, I'm confused about the 134.
I think up top where it says frontage 150, that's your requirements?
Sure, yep. And I think here, since it's non-conforming, it's 99? That's what the frontage is today? Is that correct?
Two-family dwelling, minimum lot frontage is 100 feet. 50 feet front yard setback.
Okay, so I was just curious what this 134 frontage was on the proposed addition.
Oh, because it says on here, says 99.
Oh, multifamily, 150, okay.
Right, yeah.
So minus four is good.
So.
Yeah, that's good.
So what this board would have to do, according to MGL 48, Section 6, is make a finding that the non-conformity is not, is not substantially more detrimental to the existing non-conformity in Houston neighborhood.
If I may, through the chair.
Yeah, Mike.
So make, down here in the bottom corner, they have 86. Then up in the top, they have 99.
Yep.
So they got the two of them to make up, I think.
The needed, the necessary?
I don't know what they're adding to here or not. It's kind of all, I think messed up, really.
Well, it's conver, it looks like, I think, the chair, it's converging to the back. I think it's 86, 99 in the front. Definitely deficient, but this is already pre-existing.
Yeah.
We're not being judged on the lot. We're just being judged on the use. And I think the use is definitely commensurate with the neighborhood. Am I missing something?
Yeah, because down here in the proposed, they have frontage of 134.
Yeah.
That's what the difference is.
Yeah, on the application.
Not on the application.
No, on the print. They have 134 here, different numbers, yeah.
It may just be an inaccuracy on the, on the print, perhaps.
Do you see that, Matt?
Yeah, I see it.
See what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So something, something's wrong here. It's.
I checked the deed on Massland records, and it counts rods and links, so, but it computes in the assessor's records to 98 and change, plus or minus. So that's.
Okay.
The 99.
So it's more in line with the actual picture than like the key down here?
Compared to the key down here on the bottom.
Right.
It's incorrect.
Right.
And then it has the front yard, it says, you know, 147.2. I don't know where they're getting that number from.
I can go back and maybe cut and paste there from their previous job.
Sure.
Send tidy that up.
Yeah, sure. If they could just, through the chair, if they could just.
Rear yard is 304.8.
65,000 square feet.
Yeah, so.
An acre. Yeah, that's.
So what's going on? I mean, something's really going on here.
All right. Any other comments, questions with the plan and how it's submitted? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience or online with comments, questions, concerns regarding 17 Depot Street? Okay. Mark, if you can just try to come a little closer to the table and just say your name and address.
Sure. Mark, 20 Depot Street. Is there a plan that we can see of the, of the lot?
Sure, someone can.
Changes?
Can I get the whole package?
Yeah, yeah. It should have been in the Community Development Department throughout, you know, leading up to the meeting, too, so.
I guess my question concern is first, the amount of parking. Historically, for that building, when it was single-family, they used to have park, they used to park on the street because the driveway was so limited. And I know they, the new owners have dug out an area to, to maybe expand a little bit up in there, but I mean, it doesn't seem like it's finished or even large enough for another car at this point. So I just question, you know, how much, how much expansion they've done and whether that's really enough space, you know, two spaces for two families is not very, not very large. So that, that's, that's my, my biggest concern. And then secondly, was historic nature of the house was not to have, you know, the front of the house changed very much. And so I'm, I'm happy to hear that the front of the house is staying as is, not, not a good judgment.
Thank you.
But if you could talk to them or address the parking?
Matt, bylaws, is there a requirement for parking?
Yeah, I believe it's one space per dwelling unit.
And if I can, through the chair, there's no width on these parking spots. I want to know what's going on there. Yes. That doesn't mean nothing. I can draw lines anywhere.
Chair, the survey or the.
Yeah, I mean, I really want to, if you don't mind, I really want to know how wide the parking spots are.
Yes.
I want to know how much, you're claiming there's two parking spots of what?
Of two.
I can claim two parking spots to fit a VW Bug.
Yeah.
Or two parking spots to fit a Suburban. I, I mean, there's nothing here. I'd really like to know what's going on there.
Yeah, it's one.
Because I agree with a dwelling unit. One, all right, so our bylaws require, Mark, did you hear that? The bylaws require one space per unit.
Wow. Well, that's a minimum, and the planning board can certainly request more space than that, can't it?
Yeah.
I mean, that is, in today's age, one space per unit seems pretty small to me.
Through, through the chair, it looks as though on this plan that cars could park in tandem.
Yeah.
Here. And I'm sure that there is some type of calculation in terms of the, the width of the driveway, correct? Like what that, the engineer probably has measurements?
All right.
Or could we, could we?
So I'm thinking maybe, since the bylaws do require two spots, if we can get a number, get something from the engineer, just explaining exactly the designated area for parking and, you know, size dimensions.
Which, which parking? I'm sorry, through the chair, designated on the plan, I'd like to show the two cars tandem in the driveway, one of them wanting to park two, because otherwise you get into a battle. They're not home, can't move, they're on a lot. Hey, that's good.
If I can through the chair, too, because if you know, the parking area is a teardrop. It's narrower. There's a joggo. You look at the lineage. So I mean, it's very, I think, I don't know, deceiving in my eyes. We've had prints in four of us before. The parking area's been laid out specifically as the size, area, and what's going on. We're allowing this as a special permit. I mean, I don't know what's going on here. Numbers are wrong over here, numbers are wrong here. There's no numbers up here. Bring it in front of us. Give us everything.
For the chair, can we, can we just put something in that states they have to meet minimum parking standards?
Good. Yeah, but the.
If there's a concern for, what were you gonna say?
No, it's, comments are legit.
Yeah.
Looking for engineered design for the parking.
I'd like to see, the driveway's great. I just, I don't want it necked down because again, parking issues might just neighbors, you know, two separate apartments. Come straight 12 feet each or something like that. Come straight out, show four spaces, because literally with seven bedrooms, and you're not living there, right?
No, it'll be owner occupied.
So you will be there. But in one of the rooms, you could have three adults in one apartment. You could have six cars in this place. I get what Mark's saying.
I mean, if you look right now, we have a dumpster there.
Yeah.
Trailer there. We have two trailers there. And what were the measurements of the parking? We did eight, 15 by 22?
Yeah, so if we can just get the numbers on the plan, because they need to, the plan needs to get changed anyways because the frontage, the numbers aren't.
I definitely have them correct that. I just feel like this is drawn to scale.
Okay. And I saw another question in the audience, or another hand up.
Oh, sorry, yeah.
Just come close to the table and just say your name and address, please.
Yeah, I know we've already kind of discussed it, you guys have. I'm just reinforcing, Mark.
Can you sit over there, chair?
Okay.
Just state your name and your address.
Sure. James Rollin, they live at 15 Depot Street, right next door. I can back up what Travis says. The dumpster's in the back, like, it's totally good. You can feel the distance. Just again, backing up what Mark said, parking in the street, I know for us, if there's a car on the sidewalk, when we're trying to pull out, just as a safety, we can't see the right side coming up here. So like, we actually have to pull out halfway into the, into the traffic lane, just to peek around the corner, see traffic. So again, just kind of reinforcing how core into the parking issue is. Otherwise, that was pretty much your main concern, just against next door. And again, I can reinforce that dumpster. It is nice parked back, so that's, that's pretty much it.
Bye.
So I'm gonna go just from the easier left to right, so just over here, please. Same thing, just approach and name and address, please.
Leslie from 20 Depot Street. Along with that, as Mark said, the previous neighbors, it was a tandem situation, just a single driveway. But they were often in the street, which aside from, it's very difficult for us backing out of ours with cars over there. But if you're familiar with depot, it gets really narrow right there. And so I'm just afraid if you have a two-family in a tandem situation, we all, I'm not going to bother worrying about getting out, I'm just going to park on the street. And, you know, we had that with another neighbor, and there was a truck like halfway up on the sidewalk. So for people in strollers, people with wheelchairs, gentleman walking around that needs a cocaine. So just worrying about that, making sure that there's enough parking spaces in there, convenient for people to use them the way that they're designed.
Thank you.
Can you just put in the word?
Yep. Yep.
Susan Wakersma, 19 Depot Street. I am the direct butterer to this home. I am impacted completely by this because my north side of the house faces them. I see what's going on every window in my house. I see that they're approaching closer and closer to my property with this driveway that's not going to be adequate at all, with trucks, SUVs, et cetera, et cetera. So them digging more closer to my 100-year-old maple trees is very concerning to me. Just the impact of just having all of this happening is just too much. The trees in the backyard, I don't know if they're coming down. They are a danger. I know that they spoke about that when they first looked at the house, that these trees have to come down. My property line is posted with granite posts, those belongs to me. The hedge belongs to me. It's a well-established hedge, and I'm very concerned about the privacy. I do not want to have 165 feet from my east-to-west boundary in stockade fence. It is going to take away completely what my idea of a historical home is. And I know that the people that were the previous owners are very upset about this happening. It's supposed to be a family home. It's been a family home for 174 years, and I want to leave it that way. It will take away from the neighborhood. We have plenty of apartments on Depot Street. The one across the street from, from the home has been a problem for years. Many times, Leslie and Mark have had to call police. I've had to call police. Bottles are breaking. People are yelling. I really don't want that next to me. I don't want yelling. I want quiet. I live in a homestead that was 88 acres. I owned this property here. I didn't, but the owners did. And I want to try to keep that integrity. By mishmashing this house all up, just takes away my idea of the story.
Thank you for calling.
Can I speak to that?
Yes, just to the, to the board.
Sure.
Yeah.
We have taken the trees down. We have not touched any of the trees in the back. If they are a danger or a problem, we can address that. That's not an issue. The hedge, we have, we have not gone up into that large flat land that you see over here. So we're not, there's still quite a bit of space over there that's not approaching at all on that north-facing side of their property.
Okay.
This is a mess.
Um.
Gentleman on Zoom.
Somebody on Zoom, yeah.
I think she's working on me either. So with the, all right, so maybe on the plan, maybe we'll look for an extent of work and how, if the engineer can put on there, how far away the extent of the work is going to be from the property line? Is that a logical thing?
Foundation sign.
No, it's through the chair. I think you may be speaking of the extent of the driveway.
Yeah.
It's from the edge of your driveway. Later, you gotta get it done. You're gonna be about 30 feet from her property or 28, and I get that. Well, to the edge of the driveway, meaning she posts us in. People just got to see it. They got to see that you're providing four spaces. That's the best you can do. If someone wants to park in the street, there's nothing you can do about it. You can't have more fur cuts and reduce space on the street. So whatever. It's urban living, I mean, 23, you know, it's downtown.
Yeah, so you're, you're doing some work on the driveway now. So if we can just maybe get on the plan, how far, how much further you're proposing to go? And if you're not going any further, just show the extent of work for the driveway and how far it is from the property line.
This survey is how it is right now. Like the parking space one and parking space two, that's drawn, it's drawn two. We did the work prior to this.
So just with hearing concerns from neighbors, we just want to know, all right, you're not going to add 10 more spots going in. So just like something, just extent of work.
Yeah, a limit of work.
A limit of work and how far it's going to be from property line.
How do I show?
If I can through the chair, we want numbers. I don't want a drawing. We want numbers here. So like, is this 15 feet? 15 feet? Is this 20 feet? You've got to have numbers in this area of what's going on or what's already there.
So I think Travis, if you're not digging anymore, have a line showing the limit of work for the driveway and how far away that is from potential, the property line. Just so then it's on the plan, like, this is your limit of work, you're not going any further.
Okay. I guess I'm just looking at the scale here.
Yeah.
Thinking that it shows.
Well, the number, it also says 99 feet and 134, so just.
I will definitely talk to them about that.
Oh, I just saw another, another question. All right.
Hi, how are you?
Yeah.
Okay, so I want to be clear. I don't want you to come through a drawing and put dimensions. 15 feet wide for two, you know, width, that's only seven and a half feet. That's not your work. Cars is six and a half feet. So it really needs to be at least, you know, parking spaces that are in malls are eight and a half to nine feet. That's the way they are. So this should be 10 and 10, because you want it to be comfortable for them to use the space. You don't have to say, oh, it's too tight, I can't get my door. So provide that and have the drawing show that. Because if you come back 15 feet wide for two, I'm not, I mean, we need to make this work.
We use the measurements that were in the bylaws, according to.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're, we can do what we need to do to make, you have the very best project you can here for the neighbors.
Plan should also show the deck off the back of the house.
Oh, it should.
Oh, yeah.
That's not.
It's still information for us, because we have to know.
So it's on the architectural plans? It's not on the site survey? Because the site survey is only what we have so far?
Just proposed, yeah.
Show it. Help this engineer show it.
Okay. I didn't know this. I just asked for what it said on the card. The deck is on the architectural plans.
Mr. Chair, is there opportunity to increase the parking space, like make them wider or no, based upon the way that?
Well, I want to, there is. I just want to first ask them what the actual measurements are.
Sure, yeah.
We have them, what was told to us.
Sure.
If you want to see something different.
No, no, I just, I was curious if you, based on the topography, whether or not there is opportunity to move, move it and make it a little bit wider.
Yeah. I also need to know if I can do that prior. They can't, they won't do a site survey without the work being done.
Yes, no, they will. They will. They'll propose a plan and put it in front of this board. That's, that's how these plans work. They introduce a proposal to us.
They show, this is what we're proposing, this is what we're gonna build. That way we see, make basically a contract. We have to see what you want to do, what you want to do.
Ma'am.
Hi.
Don't need to run, sorry. Take your time.
May I introduce myself first of all?
Yes.
I'm Kate. I'm, I'm one of your neighbors. I live at 15 Depot Street.
Just introduce yourself to the whole board.
Took down that huge tree and letting it drive. So my name is Kate Thompson. I live at 15 Depot Street with James, who spoke earlier. And we just moved in about two years ago. And I met Marcelo, who's very kind. And he's your friend. Yes, that's great. So we, yeah, we allowed you to use the. Driveway, it's great. I'm so happy that you guys took down that one tree that was like, it looked like it was going to fall down every storm that came through. We were a little sad about the other trees that came down because of privacy and whatnot. But I don't have any, any complaints. My question is just if you guys have a plan for what the, the north side of the building might, might look like, or like what type of construction might be happening? No, I'm not trying to like, oh, no, I'm just curious, because our, our house faces the, your north side.
Okay.
Oh, there's no changes on that side.
No changes?
Yeah.
No changes to that side.
It's on the other side. There's a small dormer. Got it. Oh.
But the plans are publicly available in the office, if you do want to see them.
No, I mean, millions.
It, it seems like she'll give you a copy before you leave.
I know, I've got millions of them.
All right, so I think we just got to, just take the comments you've heard and just add some numbers and just clean up.
Okay. I'll go back to them.
Any other stuff we'd like to see? Oh, Mark?
Sorry, one more question and a moment. There's a structure behind the house, new structure. What is this, what is going to happen to that?
Okay. So is that on the plan?
Yeah.
Okay. What, what structure?
A shed, 187 feet squared.
Okay, and is that remaining?
Yes.
Okay.
And just a comment, again, in regards to the parking on the street. Police station is right here. Police cars are going by several times a day, 60 miles an hour down from there. So be aware that that's another reason why parking on the streets is not a good idea.
And through the chair, just to point that was brought up by Mark, the shed that's here, make sure you, if you propose the deck, whatever it is, 10 feet, 12 feet, 8 feet, whatever, that it's shown. And make sure the shed needs to move and show it being moved. Because right now, it's six feet off the back or something.
It won't be moved. It has a foundation.
All right, so your deck is going to be stared out, is that?
Yes.
Not a deck.
So it is add the deck to the play.
Process change. You know, you have a challenge here. I mean, what you have there is a pre-existing non-conforming lot. Right now, you need 20,000 square feet. You have an 15. And as mentioned, some of this work has to be cleaned up because it says lot area 43 in one place. In other words, 65,000. It's not even.
Right.
And then we're listening to the people coming here today. They're, they're earnest, right? It's tight there. Parking on the street makes it difficult for people to pull out. And at the same time, people don't want you to approach. So you have your work cut off, you, you know, more cash, you get off the street better while making everybody happy at the same time. But I can appreciate the challenge because this is already a non-conformal lot, so it's tight. So you need to clean up the information, you need to provide numbers. And I think we need to be, if it were a special permit, we can require it. So we need to be a comment to account the concerns of your neighbors.
And I'll make just one final comment. I know we require one parking spot per apartment. That doesn't mean that's all you're gonna need. In today's world, as has been stated, most households, I don't say most, there's two vehicles. It's that simple. I mean, especially in the real world. And if you have an older person living there also, you could have three. So the idea is, I know they're showing two, but is that going to be enough? So the idea is, I know they're showing two, but is that gonna be enough to accommodate and make things right all the way around? Where, to those spots, that's why, without seeing numbers and actual layout, is there enough to have four cars actually in that driveway? Or isn't there gonna be enough room for four cars in that driveway? I don't know. It's not in front of me, right now, I'm thinking there's nothing there. So without numbers and a full-blown layout, I won't make a decision on any of that stuff.
Fair enough.
And through the chair, you're more than welcome to invite your engineer to come with you or call in if, to talk through the numbers or whatever, whatever you need.
Just with the parking concerns, you know, I know the bylaws say one and two, but we have to take into account for the concerns of the neighbors.
No, I can have him add in more, it's a very, there'll be tandem.
And then just the limit of work too, so. Alright, so I think we'll end up continuing this one to our next meeting, which is 28, 7 o'clock. If anyone would like to make a motion on that?
So moved?
So.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Zwicker, seconded by Mr. Preston. Any further discussion? Uh, one sec, I, sorry, I saw your hand up at the, before.
I just wanted to try to classify what a multifamily is versus a two-family, because there is a third floor attic that is usable space. It was a playroom, it was a finish room. Is this gonna be more than two families?
No.
Nope.
Are they gonna be able to put a family out in the shed?
I think it's like two.
That's, yeah.
You know, I mean, multifamily is kind of a number that anybody could pick.
So they're proposing a two-family dwell.
The other thing is, the water department is going to do their water and sewer on the street, but it's not proposed for this year now. It's not gonna be done until next year, because there wasn't any money in the budget for that, and I've already spoken to them. So, um, the new water sewer lines going up Depot Street aren't gonna be done until next year. Um, I don't know if that has any effect on them, um, you know, adding more bathrooms or whatever they need to do.
If it does, it doesn't, it's not for the planning board for this.
What, what is the amount of people in a multifamily home? What is the allowance for that?
It's just by bedrooms.
So the plan, uh, so the plans are available.
Yeah.
Those are the plans.
Yeah. But it just said two-family or multifamily, I didn't know how many were.
So they're proposing a two-family.
Yeah, okay.
Alright.
I just didn't vote.
Yep. I, I just saw her hand up and I forgot to go to her, so, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, so we'll continue this to Wednesday, February 28th, 7:00 PM.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, we'll, it'll be quick. I didn't see anything. That's why I hate this online thing. Alright, we're just gonna take something out of order, it's gonna be a quick thing. Um, additional business, Blackstone Valley Logistics, release of performance guarantee for road signage, possible votes, Mr. Manerick.
So.
So, is there anything in the packet for this?
Yes, should have a letter, request for a release of funds and an email from Bob Manerick confirming the, okay, so ultimately, we got a bond put down for some signage from Blackstone Logistics, it was in the amount of 27,000. And, um, the work ended up getting paid out, it was 26 and change. So, um, the, we just have to release the check back to them for the performance guarantee. And Bob confirmed in his email that the work had been completed and satisfactory to the town.
And also with Adam Ferno, highway superintendent too, so.
Yep.
So you need a motion to have returned the $27,000 check?
Yes.
I just made that motion.
Made by Mr. Zwicker, seconded by Mr. Silkret. Any further discussion? Bob, do you have anything to?
Just one comment. Skanel went above and beyond on this project. This was for the signage at the North Street and the Guallo Street intersection. Stop signs, crosswalk signs, the three blinking stop lines were not in that $27,000 budget. Paid eight for those on the road. Each sign was $2,200 and change. $6,700 for those three blinking signs.
Nice.
I wanna thank Skanel.
Yeah, that's awesome.
For this board, I think they went above and beyond paying for that on the road.
Concur.
It enhanced safety considerably. People are actually stopping, which is, which is a shock.
Yeah, they were awesome to work with, the entire project.
Awesome, no, appreciate it.
Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, all set. Was there something else with that one?
Thanks, Bob.
Did you, you said you wanted to be quick, let us wait till the end.
Yeah, we could.
Uh, yeah, that's a quick thing, wrap up at the end, we'll just do that at the end.
Okay.
Alright. Public hearing for 7:15, Anthony Megan Fiero, application for special permit, AA-240117, accessory apartment, 134 U Street, possible votes. And while you're setting up, I'll read the notice. In accordance with Mass General Laws, Chapter 48, the Town of Douglas accessory apartment zoning bylaw, Section 3.3 and 9.3, the Douglas Planning Board is holding a public hearing on the application for Anthony and Megan Fiero regarding an accessory apartment special permit. The property location is 134 U Street, Accessory Map 222, parcel 39.3, Douglas, Massachusetts. The public hearing is being held on Wednesday, February 14th, 2024, at 7:15 PM in the Douglas Municipal Center Resource Room, 29 Depot Street, Douglas, Massachusetts. Any person interested or wishing to be heard should appear at the time and place designated. Visit douglasmass.gov for the agenda and Zoom information. Copy of the application is available for review during regular business hours in the Douglas Community Development Department, 29 Depot Street, Douglas, Massachusetts, 01516. Jacob Schultzberg, Chair, Douglas Planning Board. Public hearing is now open. Megan, you're here. Margaret?
Yep, Margaret Bacon Allen Engineering, applicant Megan Fiero. And we're here requesting a, a special permit for a proposed accessory apartment.
Is there, do we have a, where do I stand, Bill, Matt?
I don't know, we used to have an easel years ago.
It's right there. Well, it's being used, no, that's just.
No. Turn the other room, I think.
You know, we, we should have a stand somewhere in this room, I don't know where it went.
I used to have one and I left it at one of the town halls.
It's gonna be fun when we make you point at it too.
Alright, well, thank you, so why they're looking for the.
Yeah, if you can just continue, just, we're gonna, he's working on finding a stand.
So this is a, a proposed in-law apartment at 134 U Street. Just to get your bearings, U Street, here's Elm Street, that comes out right here, this is a six-acre retreat lot, oh, thank you. It's an, everybody see this okay?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so it's an existing, uh, six, almost seven-acre retreat lot. The Fieros purchased this house, it was a couple of years ago, that's when it was constructed in 2022, correct? So it's a fairly new house, on private well, private septic, and what the, uh, the parents would like to do is build this in-law apartment for their aging parents. So this is the existing, it's an existing one-bedroom in-law apartment. We are asking for a waiver, it's slightly, uh, bigger than the, the 900 square feet, it's, I believe it's 1170, uh, 11, yeah, 1170 square feet detached.
It includes garage.
Just.
Yeah, so, uh, and then they're also proposing, they're gonna obviously extend the driveway, and there is a proposed garage. And then in the packet, you all should have the packet here, it does, uh, show picture of, uh, the proposed building, because there is an existing pool here, so, uh, we tried to design it such so that it's, it's in front of the pool, but within that 50-foot requirement, detached in-law has to stay within 50 foot, so we do have the, the 50 feet. Um, and also in the packet, there's a, a letter of support from the, the neighbor right here, and also a, a letter from, uh, Megan describing, you know, the need for this in-law apartment for the parents. And we are, uh, have gone before the Conservation Commission, because there's an isolated wetland right here, and they reviewed it Monday night, got to do a couple of minor tweaks with the erosion control, and, uh, that's about it. That goes around their own concern. And obviously the septic was, uh, we get approval here, then I'll upgrade the existing septic system. Uh, just leave another, another trench to accommodate that house with a new septic tank. And then, uh, what they'll do with, uh, they'll share the existing well, what they'll do is they'll tap into the, the existing, uh, well inside the basement, and then bring the water line over from there.
Okay. Alright, Mr. Benoit, comments and some guidance on just where to go for this one?
So this is accessory apartment.
So the, the applications for the accessory apartment detached for the 1170.
Right, so they're asking for a waiver, the minimum of 900 square feet, 1170 for the apartment, 640 for the garage, totaling 1810, which is more than double.
Okay, I can ask a question through the chair to Mr. Benoit.
Sure.
What does the garage have anything to do with the 1170?
So.
Can it just show 1170?
The way our standards read is the accessory apartment shall be clearly secondary in nature to the principal dwelling, and it shall not exceed 900 square feet in area.
Forget that.
That's all.
Why the 18?
Yeah, that's what I'm kinda confused about too.
Which the element should say 1170 and not be 18, whatever.
Okay, so.
You don't need approval for the garage.
No, that's a separate thing.
Okay, well, this bylaw is unclear on that.
Okay. Yeah, 'cause you can build a shit, like the applicant before, they put a shut-up on their property, and that's not in the numbers, the total numbers, so. Because, from my understanding, this is just one plan that was submitted for us and also the CONCOM, so the proposed garage is probably just on there for the CONCOM's concerns, right? You didn't wanna have like two separate plans for two separate meetings.
Not a good idea.
So this board's gonna consider the 1170.
Yeah, but if I can through the chair, I have a big, on that 1170. So, if we take a look, we have a stair, staircase going upstairs. If we take another look at this picture, this upstairs can be a finished room.
No, that's a basement, and that is a dwelma, so that way, that's all, it could be vaulted ceilings.
So you put on a full basement?
Yeah.
So e- either you're going up or going down, you're still adding square footage. Sorry, you're doubling it. But normally, and everything we have in front of us, it's always, if it's in a building, it's the area of that space.
Through the chair, I mean, I, I think basements store or stuff, you've got mechanical down there, basement, basement, you know, we can, I mean, it should not be for living space. If it's, you're saying it's a cathedral two-story space in the front, which I can see that.
Yeah, so it's, there's no attic there either.
Okay, so this goes in the minutes, okay, we can do it. There's no attic.
And through, through the chair, and Mr. Benoit, if we're allowed to do detached 50 feet away from the original home, then how else will we account for a foundation? You'd have to have some type of foundation with the basement or something in order to create the.
Above a garage or whatever, and it's just the space. But, and, um, I mean, I got, the 1170 dollar permit, are you, through the chair, I'm gonna add, are you adding a garage under the house to 50 feet to this facility?
Are you asking me?
Are you adding a garage to the existing house?
It's for storage and for a third vehicle.
Right here?
Yep, it's for storage and for a third vehicle.
It is 50.
So, no, that garage doesn't exist yet on the house.
Yeah, so it's, it's a proposed.
Proposed.
But it has 50 feet to the proposed on the road, I think.
Yes, that's correct.
Right now, the garage doesn't exist.
Mm-hmm.
See where I'm going?
But it says proposed.
Proposed.
Which is good, finally something.
Right, it's proposed, but it doesn't exist. So do you go with, before permits issued on this, the garage must be completed?
I think that would, yeah, it'd probably have to.
I understand the fact, you know what I'm saying? Because to get that 50 feet, you need to have that garage.
Yeah.
With the special permit, I noticed that you can put contingencies on it.
That's what I'm just bringing up.
Can we add the contingency that we can get a certificate of occupancy for the accessory dwelling unless the, because we're hoping to do everything concurrently, all at one time, so that way we can hopefully reduce a little bit of cost, but have all the trades there and just kind of boom, 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 do everything at once. We don't get a certificate of occupancy on the accessory dwelling unless we do the garage, which we're 100% gonna do.
I get that, just make sure your engineer pins those foundations, you don't wanna be 49 foot, nine inches, you wanna be 50 foot, three inches or something.
Yeah, markups are gonna come out.
Of course. Just make, you know, we're all for that, you know, at the same time.
Yeah.
Just what the point is, wanting to make sure it's 50.
Or even, if, if this goes through a condition that the foundation for the garage is poured first, before.
Right, I mean, that, that's fine.
That, that's, you're not.
Through the chair, we've had it before where we get a project like this, it's proposed, they build one building, they say, oh, well, we can't afford to do this one now. Now all of a sudden you have this building and not that building. And it's trying to get clarified to that, either through arguments or whatever, what they're saying they're gonna do is it gets done before they're given the okay.
We gotta build a foundations, we'll make sure.
I'm just, I'm just stating a fact.
Any other comments for this, for you, from?
Here from the chair.
Okay, uh, Rich?
Um, I'm just curious as to the reasoning and the argument for, for the size of the 25% of the wire due to what's allowed. Sure, I can do it. So my mother is legally disabled, she has Alzheimer's disease. Part of her diagnosis includes, um, managing and hoping to not decline, so part of that is medication compliance, which we're doing. Part of it is keeping herself mentally and socially stimulated, and the third is being healthy and exercising. So, as you can see on the plan, there's a little, we're calling it a study, that's really gonna be her stat these days. So she is gonna have hopefully a stationary bike in there, because she was a triathlete, and she can't ride a bike anymore, because she can't ride a bike home. So hoping to get a stationary bike for her in there, a puzzle table for her to do puzzles. She's recently gotten into art, I bought her an easel and paints and things like that, she's really into that, and she's actually part of a clinical trial where she uses this device, um, and it has like a lot of mechanical components, it's like these glasses and these ear things that emit sounds and lights, and it's supposed to create gamma waves, and so she has all that equipment and computer stuff that we need some space for. We also wanna make sure that, we're not gonna have any island seating at that kitchen, it's all gonna be, it's gonna be a kitchen table, because if she's in the wheelchair, we're gonna have to wheel her up to it, and she's not gonna be able to sit at a countertop. So we wanna make sure that she can go navigate around the furniture, and then, um, I didn't put this in the letter, but someday she's not gonna know who we are, and we're still gonna have to take care of her. So someday her therapy room will have like a twin bed for either myself or my dad to sleep in there versus the couch. So that's why I'm asking. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Megan.
Yep.
Any other member of the board have a comment or question?
No, I got no problem with the 1170, like I said, as long as there's verbiage in there, that, it's all done in concurrent time, so everything falls into place.
Mm-hmm.
That's fine.
Alright, and this is a public hearing, um, can you just bring up the audience? Alright, anyone in the audience with comments, questions, concerns? If you can just approach the table and just state your name and address, please, sir.
Yes, I, my name is Dennis Drumheller. I'm President, 118 U Street. I'm one of the abutters. And the first thing I'll say, and I said this on Monday when I was at the Conservation, I'm not against an accessory apartment in principle. The problem is, is this is the second iteration of this. The first time it was withdrawn without prejudice, so I got to see the initial plans or lack thereof and different things. And ultimately, to me, this is almost backwards. This is a pool house that's being utilized as a accessory apartment. And in the documentation from the first round, it was even stated by the applicant that this was a pool house. This design has changed extremely to make things work. As you pointed out, there's, I guess, a garage or an entrance room, so there's a detached garage. There's a detached and attached, you know, things to take care of the 50-foot offset and everything else. Originally, this was a two-bedroom, now it's a one-bedroom, but we're going to go back to the two-bedroom. There's a lot of different stories, a lot of different things that don't add up.
So, we're only looking, we're looking at what's in front of us.
Well, as an abutter, my notice said accessory apartment with detached garage.
Uh huh.
So, I guess I can speak about that? I don't know.
It shows.
From the accessory apartment, it's attached. Yes, originally, it was attached. I'm going to maintain that over 900, so back in the day when this town put the bylaws together, it's all about the bylaws, it was stipulated that 900 square feet or less is an apartment. I would think that their thinking was over 900 square feet is a house. And that's what this is. I noticed that from Plan 1 to Plan 2, we couldn't adjust this, it has a symmetry to the pool, so we got to keep this thing beautiful and everything else. I understand they need to get their mom and dad in there and that's fine, I have no problem with that. But ultimately, where I have a problem is with the bylaws. Through this whole process, for example, I came to the town and I said, hey, listen, I said, I got this notice that basically said they want to do an accessory apartment. And they said, yeah. And I said, I looked at things and I said, at the time, there were two bylaws that were being exceeded. It was like 63 feet from the house and obviously, the square footage thing at the time was 1,200. So, in the second go-around, I said, gee, shouldn't this go before the ZVA because of these bylaws? And they said, no, the bylaws say the planning board can do it, which I have a problem with because the abutters aren't notified properly of what's actually happening. But I accept that. That's what the bylaw states. Then I said, well, on the notice to the abutters, shouldn't you put something that there is considerations for waiver for the bylaw? And I was told, no, that's what the bylaw says. The bylaw says 900 square feet. I've looked at this plan, I've gone and I've looked at everything. You know, we've got open concept, we've got a massive kitchen, massive family room, we've got the bedroom, we've got a bathroom with two vanities, the washer and dryer up there, we've got a walk-in closet, we've got a study that, forgive me for saying, geez, things keep changing. That was a two-bedroom in the first plan. Now, it's a study. You know, they do have, obviously, they want it permitted as a two-bedroom. You can see the alcove that lets remove the door, so it's not legally a bedroom. It's all these back and forths, but ultimately, I look at this and say, where does it stop? The next person that comes along and says, hey, let that house, 1170, I want 1230, I want 1,300. And even I myself, back many years ago, I've been a resident of this town for 19 years, I wanted my yard, it's kind of strange, it's an acre of usable land and an acre, it's a one-way, 48 by 1,000. Said, hey, I want to come in and just put a shed, would that be okay? And they said, no, if you've got somewhere else you can build it, it's not going to happen. It wasn't happy, but I had to follow the bylaws. I think this design is excessive. Obviously, when the forefathers designed this, they know it's for care of an elder or elders. So, obviously, I would have thought they would have taken into consideration that, yes, a wheelchair has to traverse, everything else. Now that all these other support structures are going in, you know, why not put the exercise bike in that new room that gives it the 50 feet? Originally, that wasn't there. I saw the original plans and everything has changed up. So, I'm looking at this also as a fairness. I mean, if I'm going to be told, you can't do this, you can't do this, follow the bylaws, follow the bylaws, follow the bylaws, and all of a sudden, we can make exceptions, where does it stop? I think they can square this down to 900 feet. It's an apartment, it's not a second house. So, I don't know. I'm sorry that I have to do this under those circumstances, but I'm looking at the way I've had a deal, or the town has treated me with the bylaws, and, you know, how do you give different exceptions? It's an apartment. You know, I still think it's a pool house. And like I said, it was documentation last round where the applicant called it a pool house. They said in the first one, the parents are gone, they're going to use it as a pool house. And then the town voluntarily told me, that's illegal. You can't have a kitchen in a building and not have it as an accessory apartment. Not saying not to have it, but there's just so many pieces to this that, you know, in fairness, I think they can still have the accessory apartment, she can still take care of her mother and her father, but I think it needs to feel, you know, basically come into compliance with the bylaws state. Don't look at it, I'm not saying don't build it. I'm just saying, it should be in compliance with the accessory apartment by law.
Okay. Just, I just want to clarify, they are allowed to request a waiver, they're not violating the bylaw by asking for one.
But I'm just conering. I'm saying, I wish the abutters all were aware that this request was here. They just said it's just for accessory apartment. And when I talked to different neighbors, they went, no, it's just a... And I said, no, there's other things going on. And they went, oh. But, you know, for whatever reason they choose, not to show up.
And I know you're saying it was a pool house originally, but...
No, no, it is, it's a pool house.
But, sir, sir, I just gave you a lot of time. If they were just to build a pool house, all they would have to do is go get a building permit and build a pool house. They're having a public hearing because it's in a...
People wouldn't be living in it, wouldn't have a kitchen if it was a pool house.
So, but they would have been able to just build it with the building permit.
Yeah.
So, we're having a public hearing to hear what they are requesting and to hear from the abutters.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, if you know, big buildings, everybody, quality, whatever they want to be, everyone can live in. You can also file, we do this all the time, deed restrictions. It's not a second bedroom there, even though it's there, I don't know if that applies in this case. We do that a lot, when somebody has a bedroom and they can't have a closet because of septic issues, they file a deed restriction. So, I don't know. I mean, this has to be convertible someday, God forbid. You know, this is, I deal with this all the time, accessory apartments, deed complacency. It has to be convertible. They'd be able to open it up using... But, okay, so that's worth it. I don't particularly have a problem with this. I understand the citizens' concerns about being consistent, but we do have the ability to...
Be flexible.
Be flexible on this. And it is a separate building, separate building would tend to need a little more space, but whatever.
So, the bylaws say that the board can allow deviation from the above conditions where necessary upon finding that such deviation will not be detrimental to the neighborhood nor the intent of the bylaw. And I just want to just state that this will not be detrimental to the neighborhood. I'm 500 feet off of the road and nobody will be able to see this structure with the exception of the Burtonis, who provided a letter of support. This will increase the value of my property, which will then increase the value of other properties around me. And the intent of this bylaw is to take care of family. And I don't believe that an accommodation for a legally disabled person to do therapy and accommodate a wheelchair would qualify as being detrimental to the neighborhood or to this bylaw.
And then, yeah, there's no closet in the study, right?
No, I mean, that was just going to be dead space, so I'm like, why make a dead space? We can put, my mother loves plants. She has like a jungle in her house. Every time somebody in our family passes away, she gets like a plant and then they grow and grow, so plants that come from a little forest that she's had for 20 years, she wheels them around the house and, you know, that would be a good spot for them.
Anyone else in the audience with a common question, concern for this? Anyone online? It's always a concern, because they never speak up.
Yeah.
All right, board, any other questions or...
Sorry, through the Chair, Mr. Benoit, what are your thoughts on this?
It's my job to provide you with the standards of special permit discretion. You guys, this is discretionary special permit where you have the ability to waive the requested waiver. That's the longest in character with the neighborhood and that's your discretionary. I can't weigh in on that.
There was only the one waiver, correct? Yeah. Board, any other questions, comments, concerns for moving on with this, one way or another?
Good question. Do we need a super majority for Google for this?
Yes.
So, that would be five out of the seven?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, if there's no other comments or questions, we can close the public hearing. Okay. Wait, did you have a, was that a second or?
That was a second.
Okay. All right. So, most may be Mr. Preston, second by Mr. Greco. Any further discussion? Seeing as none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, the public hearing is now closed. Thank you.
We just closed the public hearing, yeah.
Oh.
You can go upstairs.
Yeah. Yeah, so the board's just going to...
Yeah.
Yeah, discuss.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I believe, sorry.
Yeah, you can lead the, you can...
Oh, okay.
Yeah. The board's going to just go over it all now. As a board.
So, action first to be on the waiver.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion with it.
Yeah, that would be our first action to...
I'd like to make a motion on the waiver to accept the increased square footage, being that I don't feel it is more detrimental to the neighborhood and I think it's in keeping and concert with the property and everything there, so there's...
All right, motion made by Mr. Solkret, second by Mr. Preston. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Did you say it? All right. That is six. Yeah, we might as, well, it was unanimous, so.
Yeah.
All right. And then the next order would be...
Yeah, if you're looking for a motion to approve the special permit conditions.
And if, we've just got to discuss what the conditions are going to be. So, do we want to do the...
So, findings.
Do we want to do the conditions first or just...
Well, I mean, I want to speak on some of that. I know that that garage is going on that house, that garage is going to be up, not just the foundation. A lot of people, you can drive around everywhere and see a cellar hole in no building. So, that's going to be a completed garage before anything goes on, as far as people moving into any place.
Moving in, occupancy.
For occupancy.
You better believe it.
Yeah.
The secondary garage, I could care less.
Yeah, you can do that for 10 years.
Garage in the house to meet those requirements, that's going to happen.
They're putting one garage on the house.
Yeah.
And then a separate garage.
Completely separate proposed garage.
Then they have another separate garage.
Oh, near this place.
Yeah, but that was more for conservation's consideration, that part.
Right? No basements in the building.
Any other? So, garage up before occupancy?
Yep. On the, on the house, the secondary garage, I could care less, but for that requirement, that 50 feet.
Okay. And do we need a condition to be contingent on anything with Concom?
You don't need to.
Okay. They work with what we give them for the plan, so.
Right. So, there'd be a special permit, a motion for approval for a special permit with standard conditions plus the condition that the garage attached to the house be fully constructed prior to occupancy of the accessory dwelling.
Sure.
That's good language. Anyone want to carry that on into a motion?
And we're going to stay with what they're saying with the septic and all that, where they're taking from the house, the septic's going to be added on and all that. As long as that's all known and stated.
Which, once this plan got approved, you're going to be designing the septic.
Right, I understand, as long as that's all, all part of it.
All right. So, entertain a motion then. If anyone would like to make a motion.
Also move that motion.
Second. Okay, so, off of that language, motion made by Mr. Zwicker, second by Mr. DeRoz. DeRoz. It's a tough corner over there, you guys all sound the same and they're all named Mike. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed? Unanimous. All right, so you are all set, it is passed, and just follow up with that on what...
We'll have a decision draft ready and we'll share that with the applicant for review and then we'll have the board sign at the next meeting.
Very good, thank you.
And we'll pass the information of the vote on to the Conservation Commission prior to their meeting.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Additional business, master plan. I know you have a little update on that, you sent some correspondence out.
Yeah, so, we, first of all, our town administrator executed a contract with CMRPC to do our master plan. We have to request funding at town meeting. And after presumably, town meeting approves funding, CMRPC will get started with administering our master plan. However, my laptop's dying. I saw that coming.
So, two hours until the bid is out?
Yeah, that's all it took. And I sent out an email, starting kickoff to the master plan, to the members that volunteered. And we're looking at a March 20 kickoff date. We'll do a SWOT analysis and organize, set a chair and appoint a chair at that time. So, that's all I have for an update, pronounced.
So, the funding goes to town meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Is that just a general request, we need a public hearing on that?
No, we don't need to do a public hearing, it's a general request.
Okay. Any questions on that? All right. Town meeting warrant. Public votes.
All right, so, per Master of Law, chapter 48, section 5, we do have to hold another public hearing for this amendment to the bylaw because it was outside of the 90 days. So, this is to send it to the selectmen for their consideration of the warrant. These are the changes to the solar bylaw that were, that were proposed by the Attorney General and reviewed by town council, and they went to the town meeting floor and they got passed over. So, we just have to hold another public hearing on this. And I'm looking for a motion to send this to the Board of Selectmen for town meeting warrant consideration.
Second.
Mr. Swak, second by Mr. Schlossman, just a comment, did anything change language-wise in between then and now?
No.
Okay. Same exact word. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so we'll schedule a public hearing on that.
All right. Ongoing development, do we have anything with the cubes? Looks like we do, someone's still sitting here.
Bob, if you'd like, it's, I, obviously, this is through Conservation Commission, there's an enforcement order for the Oxford's Conservation Commission. And the folks at the cubes at Alboa are remediating the site. They have removed the silt from the wetland and they are getting ready to administer their restoration plan, which they can't start until March, I believe they said.
Oxford approves it.
Yeah, so, and they still need Oxford's approval, so. Bob, is there anything I'd like to add?
I think the big thing for the planning board is the site plan that you approved for the Cube site, there's been some breaches. The infiltration basin has overflowed, washed out a road twice. What's happening is, when they paved the project, all the...
Can you speak a little bit? For the record, Bob and Eric, economic development. When they paved the project, all the pervious sections became impervious. For the record, Bob and Eric, economic development. When they paved the project, all the pervious sections became impervious. So all that water was now diverted through the underground infrastructure to the infiltration basin. The infiltration basin, as you know, was designed to handle, drain at eight inches an hour. It is not right now, because there's a layer of sediment on the bottom. After they paved, they set the curb, loomed, and did not stabilize the loomed areas. So we've had a lot of rain this past year, a lot of that silt ended up in the bottom of the infiltration basin, which is causing all the problems that that and I are going through right now with conservation.
They were gonna get in there and clean out the silt. Or are they waiting?
Right now, it is not draining. There's six feet of water, and it is not draining. It's been there for three weeks. So they physically have to now pump it out into 18,000 gallon trucks through a four-step filter process. I think it's a 30, 20, 10, and a 5 micron filter. Take that clean water, put it into the underground system. Drain the pond. They will have to do some infiltration tests with, I guess they call it an ilf infil- don't quote me on this one, but it's an infiltration-ometer, where they physically test, right now, what it's draining. We know it's zero. They'll probably discover several inches, up to six inches of sediment on the bottom of the pond. Once they pull that out and go probably another two feet below, put back the sand that's supposed to be there, it will drain per design. But right now, there is a problem, and you, and this board probably should be aware of that, they did not follow the stable, slope stabilization procedures. It is being addressed. The, the engineer's on top of it. Concom and both Douglas and Douglas, Douglas and Oxbridge are on top of it right now. We own the infiltration pond that's on our property in Douglas. The Oxbridge Conservation is handling the, where the breached water went. That's town of Douglas land in Oxbridge. So we have a say in, in, we're involved in both, both commissions. So that's basically the update as far as, from, from the developer to this board.
Is it sub-stabilized now? Were they able to get any mats down or?
Some, some, not all.
Hopefully, we didn't get it stabilized before.
Well, it's stabilized now with the snow.
Yeah.
But once that starts melting, we're back to ground zero. So it's kind of, when do you want to drain the pond, or the, the basin, I should say? Because the underground structure, infrastructure, has to be jet sprayed, because there's probably silt in the bottom of miles of concrete pipe right now. That has to be cleaned out first, but then you have to stabilize the slopes. You can't do that until March or April. And hopefully, we don't get a rainy spring like we did last year, because you won't be planting grass for a long time.
So are they looking for a direction, or are they trying to just?
They're working with the Conservation Commissions right now, and I think that's where the responsibility lays, if you agree with that, Matt, with the two EOs. The enforcement orders are out there right now, and they have to address those.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, they want to fix it tomorrow with those enforcement orders, but they just unfortunately can't, because weather and everything else.
So we're talking 69 days?
Possibly, weather permitting. We lost a great opportunity last week to drain the pond. We had eight straight days of no rain. Why it wasn't drained? I don't work for the developer, I can't tell you.
That's a good update.
Things to consider when we take into another project, upcoming project, hand-in-hand, you know, you might be looking at stuff like this. Because we do have to protect the town.
Yeah. Yeah, that's a good update on that. Hopefully, pray for no rain.
Well, if it's like last year, we had a lot of rain last year.
Yeah.
Any questions? Through the chair.
Perfect.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Have a good one, Bob. The two from Depot Street. Are you here for something else, or just hanging out? Okay, just, I wanted to get to you if you wanted to.
We're here.
Great date night for it. All right. All right, moving along. Any other updates for anything besides Oak Street?
We have, I have a, I'll go staff update correspondence.
Okay.
You want me to recuse?
Mr. Chairman?
We're just doing something else besides, we're just doing something real quick for.
We can't hear.
Okay.
Sorry. I have a staff update under correspondence. We have some CPTC workshops and trainings, and I just wanted to introduce these to the group and see who would like to register for some of these. These are on-demand trainings, so we can have them come to us, and there would be, I believe, forty, $200 per on-demand event, and I'm curious which subjects we'd be interested in.
These, I know these, some of these are new, I've never seen some of these, but a lot of these trainings are very beneficial for those who want to be on the board and want to stay on the board. I did a couple when I first got on, and they were very, very informative of the process, and. I think, I think I would be interested in attending some of these.
Okay.
Was that something that they come right here? During evening?
Yep. Yes, yep.
Definitely, yeah.
May I just be available to us, if I might, or with other committees?
We could open it to other committees also.
I don't know if the new or the, if you're interested.
That'd be a good one for that meeting.
Yep.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
Just looking at these, introduction to subdivision control law in A and R would probably be good.
Yep.
Planning with community support would probably be good. Roles, definitely roles and responsibilities of planning and zoning boards. Site plan review.
Site plan review.
Okay. We have a decent budget for training, so we'd be happy to set these up.
Yeah, at least start with those.
Okay.
Get some informative classes.
Okay.
Yeah, depends on their time, how long they say.
How long are these, Matt?
Uh, depends. Some are a couple hours.
Okay.
But some, some are a little longer.
Depends on who it is, it could be even more hours.
Right.
Yes.
All right, I'll set that up.
Thank you. All right.
Zoning assumptions, that'd be a big one.
Yeah.
We've had that before. Yeah.
All right, any other quick things?
Okay.
All right, P W Solo, Oak Street.
Chair, I recuse myself.
Thank you, Mike. Mr. Zwicker recuses himself. Anyone from Oak Street wants to just come up? All right, and, and this is not a public hearing, I should say that. It's not a public hearing, we're just gonna update, get an update as to what's transpired since our last meeting, and any correspondence with Blue Wave at this time.
We presented some updates for you.
I just wish I had these sooner, but that means you're working, which.
I can, I can read it, pardon me, Chair. I can read it, or I can let you guys read it, either way. I can skim over the top, how would you like?
I know you guys did a lot Monday with Concom, so I don't know if you, you don't really have to update us on too much conservation-wise, but.
Okay.
I just don't want you repeating yourself if you don't have to.
Okay, then I'll just, I'll leave this for you guys to read, but I'll just touch over a few of the, the highlights.
Yeah.
Okay, so the first little bit is about just the responsiveness that we have to things, they just put some things in writing as to when.
Can I just, who's at the table, I'm sorry?
I'm so sorry, Jason Smith, Blue Wave.
Pat Mahan, Jay Bates's son, the civil contractor.
And Mark Sylvia, Chief of Staff at Blue Wave.
Thank you, sorry.
We also have Greg Morehouse, who's on Zoom, he's representing Mill Creek, the general contractor. We also have Jeffrey Murphy, who's also on Zoom, who is the civil engineer of record.
Thank you.
And just the folks on Zoom, just, if you do start talking, just say who you are, please.
All right. So some of the, we're about 80%, 80, 85% complete with our remediation on our side, on our property. The next topic is, there's been some talk about the infiltration ponds not infiltrating. I have some attachments in here that explain that, how they were built, there you go, right there. And they, they weren't originally built to infiltrate in the way that we think that it is. There's a WIC drain that is in that detail that shows how and why it is to infiltrate when it is in operation. We are going to be doing some construction, the contractor will, will express in the next week to be able to put some of the, out, the OCS is in place. The next is, we did some testing immediately for the soil. The original soil testing was for high metals and some other items that came in below mass standard for repeatables.
Where did you get those, where were those tests from? Just all around the site?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think they took, I, I'm not 100% sure, but they took a sample, you know, inside the site, and then they took a sample of the deposited sites outside the limit of work line, 45 Oak Street.
Okay.
For rickor, eight metals and phosphates, I think. So some of that soil was clearly the soil from the incident on December 11th and the 17th, that went beyond where our erosion BMPs were?
Okay.
There's a timeline, obviously, and then in the very back, there's just an update of the work that, that's in place, and especially some of the items that you guys have specifically asked for us to get done.
Yeah, so let's just, let's go over these, the engineer, contractor updates. The last page, I want to go over those.
Okay.
So the basin one, site entrance redesign corrective actions, if you can just get some dialogue on what's going on with that. If that's gonna be Jeff or someone else.
Yeah, I think, I think Jeff can speak to them in certain, to the extent that I think that, that in, in this, it says that we have essentially taken care of the track out, identified with some additional site visits.
If we just go over it all, just because like, we're just getting this tonight, so I just want to get it out there, so everyone can hear it.
Jeffrey, would you like to go over?
Yeah.
Jeff Murphy, civil engineer, Bells and Tom, it's, which list are you going through? Is this an email list, Jason?
Engineer slash contractor update.
Basin one.
Yeah, so I mean, we have been looking into potential solutions to try to formalize the two sediment basins that were put in place over the summer to try to capture water from the lower section of the driveway. So that's something that we're currently working on. And looking at ways to, you know, modify what's currently there, formalize those, those sediment basins into more permanent BMPs, and, you know, reevaluating the hydrology of the site. Per Haley Ward's request, in the sense of using the driveway as a design point, we understand that that was something that they had requested. And then also, you know, we're gonna be proposing what we believe needs to be part of the, the final solution, which is to, you know, provide a sub-drain to intercept water at the site entrance and convey that into the drainage swell in Oak Street.
All right.
And then in terms of basin one, you know, certainly looking at ways to provide additional dissipation of water and downstream of the outlet pipe into the existing grass field area is something that we're, we're currently evaluating.
Okay. And then basin five, groundwater seepage evaluation?
Yeah, so, you know, as, has been stated, you know, the area's still under construction, there's still a lot of unstabilized area of gradient of, of the basin. We think that, you know, there would need to be some additional cleanup done down in that corner of the site below the basin that would, by removing some of that accumulated, you know, there's some soil buildup around the perimeter, silt fences and things, and I think by removing that and trying to put clean stone in, provide basically a relief point for that water should help to reduce the turbidity that was observed at that corner of the sediment controls by providing relief and then exploring options to put in a, a sub-drain or, or an under-drain that would be up gradient of the sediment for bay, which is just above the basin, to intercept some of the groundwater that's coming off the hillside, and try to reroute that around the basin is something that we're looking into. And trying to determine the best way to do that and how to ultimately reroute that groundwater around the basin and reintroduce it to the, the landscape down, down below the basin. So that's part of what we're looking at.
Okay. I understand that develop a solution to address water seepage from the toe of the slope of the infiltration basin. How are you coming along with that?
Can you just discuss briefly, Jeff, some of the discovery that we've, we've found and, and what that might look like if it's stabilized?
I'm just curious where this water seepage is coming from.
So I think, based on my understanding of the discussions that were had with the conservation, is it's more likely than not that, that there could have been an existing seep or spring at this location, and I think that is likely what is being observed or commented on by, by the conservation agent.
Jeff, are you, can you speak more into the mic or a little bit louder?
Sure.
It is in, it's a big room here.
Sure, so I think in terms of, my understanding of this issue is that it's possible that there was an existing kind of seep or, or spring in this area that was exposed when they, you know, were creating the outlet level spreader area for the basin outlet. And my thought on that is, you know, by combination of installing a, an under-drain, upgrading of the basin, which should hopefully intercept some of that water, getting to that point. Any other water that appears to be coming from that point only seems to emanate or after a, a rain event, which is not really indicative that it's coming from the basin itself, which is, as we know, is being temporarily used to hold water so that they can regulate and pump the water down in the interim state, but my thought is that that area is gonna need to be looked at closer and try to basically provide a relief point for that water so that it's not gonna create any sort of turbidity when it starts to flow in the event that it does. I mean, the idea is that we're gonna try to intercept as much water upgrading at the basin as we can, therefore minimizing what is getting down to that corner.
It's, Chair, it's been established a couple times inside of the, the Concom, it's both at Sutton as well as in Douglas, that it's not actually seepage from the, out the bottom of the basin, but it's something in the water table, the water's coming out. The turbidity, because we've disturbed, is, comes from that. So being able to capture the water more upstream from the hill that is coming down through the hardpan is a, one way. The other way is, once it's fully stabilized and construction's done, then the water that's coming out won't have the, the dirt and turbidity. It'll return to its natural state. That is also just above where the wetland is. That is also just above where the wetland is, where the silt from our site naturally and topographically went towards. So we think once it's established, the grass has grown, that wherever that water's exiting will be, will be cleaned.
So you're, you're aware of it, you're looking into it?
100%.
If there's, if you need to make changes to the
Yep.
project or that area, you'll just have to come, just update any?
Correct.
Okay. I know a couple of members of the board had gone out there, not this past Saturday, but two Saturdays ago. How was that for you guys?
Saturday after our meeting last meeting.
Any comments on what you saw or?
A lot of, there had been a lot of improvements in construction.
Yeah.
In the previous weeks and months. They're quite a team out there. They're pretty forthcoming, I thought. It was very helpful and informative on the descent. The one thing I took comfort in is that through the way through the block, I asked if any of them ever have trouble sleeping at night. And it was of course, yes. And that told me that these are people who were thinking about this and are taking it in. So that gave me a little confidence as an aside that these people were a little concerned that they were using due diligence, I think.
And it sounds like a lot has changed too, since you were last out there. It's almost changing daily, every other, definitely weekly.
It's a busy site, there's a lot going on. And if I may, it's one of the takeaways, I had read this, I went online, that Blue Wave has been bought out by a company out of Canada, is it Axios?
Axiom, correct.
Which I've read does not sell their projects. So this company, that's, these people who are committed to this long-term, they're not going to just, you know, they're in sort of a, I guess, and
Part of the community.
Kind of know who you live with, so.
I know one question was asked, I just don't know, like I said, I'm just seeing this mail today. A question was asked at the last meeting, how many trees have been removed from the property or taken down? That was asked.
I don't know the exact number of the trees. I can tell you the only trees that have been removed are from the first three phases of, of construction. The other trees in the other two phases still remain on site.
Fallen.
Yeah. I mean, yeah, they're, they're all cut now, but they've only stumped, you know, in the phases that were open to us.
Correct.
I don't think they had a survey of the trees, you know, before.
Yeah. Was there a lot of like field, like field pines, a little bit of everything?
Uh, in, you know, a lot of the site was pasture before, and then there was like rows between the pastures that were, you know, stony and then not super thick veget, you know, not big trees. And then the southern portion of the site had some, you know, pretty substantial trees out there.
Was there any update from Jeff, not Jeff, Doug? Yeah.
We still need peer review funds to engage Haley Ward.
One more time, I'm sorry.
I'm still looking for payment for peer review for Haley Ward to keep them engaged in the contract. So he's not going to go out on site until we receive payment for that, so.
Okay.
Can that be repeated? We couldn't hear, please.
Yeah. Haley Ward is seeking payment for contract for the 53G for peer review, and we have yet to receive payment from Blue Wave, so he has not gone on site on the inspections on every Wednesday. Only Brandon Fanna from Conservation House.
We'll take care of that.
Yeah. I'd love for Doug to be out there weekly. Just, it's a good update for us to have him out there and get his updates and what he sees.
Yep.
Because it's basically the town's view out there.
Understood.
And that's something you guys will just, okay.
Yes.
Any other updates since our last? Board, any questions for them? Any comments for them?
I have a question. So I attended that site walk, which I thought was very informative, as well as the other members of the planning board. And additionally, I'd like to say that there was also a neighbor that attended the site walk as well. I think it was very informative. And one of the things that, as we go forward with this, it's, it would be very helpful to have this information prior to these meetings to allow us enough time to, I understand that you're meeting with Conservation on Monday and then coming to us on Wednesday, so the timeframe is tight.
Yes.
But it would be really helpful to have an opportunity to be able to review this information before coming before us to talk about it, because there may be more questions that we have once we have an opportunity to, to look through all this.
My apologies, things are changing so quickly out there.
Totally understandable.
Definitely, the next time, you will have something beforehand.
Or even like morning of, you know,
Yeah.
Just some opportunity.
Yes.
And if Jen gets it with this, she'll make sure we, we have eyes on it.
And obviously, there'll be updates from your meeting on Monday, so you're going to need to make adjustments prior to the, to the Wednesday meeting. And then I think one of the topics that I had raised when we were out there is having some type of collaboration between Conservation and Planning Board to understand we're all on the same page in terms of what is being asked and said and agreed to, some of which will be done through these, this type of documentation. But it would be good to be able to all be together in terms of what's happening.
I know. Is there a possible proposal for that to maybe happen?
I think the Sutton Conservation Commission asked to form a, kind of a group, and the Douglas Conservation kind of shut that idea down. But we could always just request that Brandon come to our meeting and give us updates on behalf of Concombs.
Yeah.
I think maybe another way, if you, Chair, is whatever information we send to Brandon, we can send to you. We have been reading and modifying the same summary at both Sutton and Douglas and updating it, Meg, as you described. And we found out, tell me if I'm wrong, but that the Concombs wasn't aware in Douglas that we had already tested the soil for the metals and the results were in hand. And so I believe that would be helpful for whatever we send to one group, we can send to them all. And we can backdate a lot of things and just make sure that you guys have 100% of all the information that's been exchanged.
That would be helpful.
Okay.
Yeah, so I think just going forward, just, you know, there's a lot of reevaluate in here, develop a solution, develop this, develop that. Just keep aggressively doing that.
We appreciate that.
In your chronology, site walks with Conservation.
Yes.
I think you should put in, because you all were there, and you know the date because you probably put in for hours. We didn't, so just put it in there because
We will.
Somebody says, hey, you weren't there, we were there, so.
We will. Thank you. We appreciate your time. We, for your review, if there are any questions later, please feel free to reach out.
Yeah, I'll, I'll read more into it. And then let's make sure Doug is out there.
We'll take care of that immediately. Thank you.
Matt, do you have anything else for that? Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Any other ongoing developments?
Excuse me, are you going to take comments from the audience?
It's not a public hearing. Do you have any, it's more of a staff update with the developer. Do you have any new comments or concerns since
Yes.
the last
Yes.
meeting that hasn't been addressed or?
Yes.
All right. Name and address, please.
Lisa Mozinski, 60 Oak Street, representing Mozinski Living Trust. First, I would like specifically to know who from this board was at the site walk?
Three of us.
Three, as in Mr. Preston?
Yep.
Aaron Sokrat.
Thank you, Mr. Sokrat. Thank you.
And then also.
Right. So I know at the last meeting you asked for a redesign of basin one. I did not hear about a redesign of basin one tonight.
So that it's in this development, I know.
The problem is, the other day when I walked by the street, there's still water running through the stone walls. There were two other basins created, and now they're going to be permanent. There's no, they just said, we're working on it. There was no hard answer to anything that you asked for at the last meeting. And now to hear that there's, now it's groundwater that's coming out of the bottom of basin five into the corner. The corner is exactly at the boundary of the abutters, on the Sutton side where the krolls are, as well as on the Douglas side, and in the corner that blew out multiple times. So any water is still being aimed at abutters, not being contained on the site. Those ponds, the three that are there now, are nearly full, and they're being pumped all the time, from the bottom, up the hill, into some other structure. There's not a lot that's changed in the hydrology. It's still a bad situation. And we need hard answers from engineers who have plans to correct these things and not just give these folks a pass. And then to hear that they have not made their payment so that an engineer representing us can be on site to give us adequate updates, that is completely wrong, and you should fine them for it. Thank you. And I think our neighbors have updates on situations that have happened that you haven't heard about as well.
I was trying to keep it to the planning board's perspective, because I know there's enforcement orders in effect with Conservation that they're dealing with, so just trying to keep it pertinent.
Well, with all due respect, if you don't have an engineer out there to give you feedback
And then that's being handled. We're, we can look into it, but it's, they're making that correction and figuring it out.
It shouldn't have to be corrected.
I, I know.
Bill Rossi, 41 Oak Street. Since the last meeting, it was on January 31st, there was an issue with the swale at, leading into basin two. They were pumping water, supposedly dirty water, out of basin two, up through the swale, across some flocculent logs in an attempt to clean it.
Somewhat.
Flocculent logs?
Flocculants, logs?
Yes. Yes.
Don't know what that is, thank you.
But my understanding is it's a, it's a device to clean the water and coagulate the particulates so they'll settle out. Anyway, during this procedure, the swale, the berm that forms the wall of the swale, which is adjacent to my property, failed, releasing all of this water onto my property. So, I mean, these pumps produce quite, quite a volume. They could move like 15K gallons an hour. So in fairly short order, I had a stream in the middle of the dry week that we had running across my property and down my
Have reported to Brandon with?
Brandon was there and he saw it.
So Brandon, Concombs aware of that?
Oh, yeah, he was there. He saw it, he came on my property, he took pictures of it.
Comment on the WIC?
So, I mean, as Brandon said, he said, this, this could have been a disaster because the water, you know, came within a few, maybe what, 20 feet of my foundation, where it was then diverted by a, a structure on my property, fortunately. But that, that structure is, it's a perimeter drain, it's just a trench, you know, stone-filled trench, which, you know, in January frequently wouldn't be too effective because it would be iced over. If it had have been colder, you know, this could have been a mess.
Yeah, I think, and they're aware of that, Conservation's aware of it. Has that issue been rectified?
It has, yeah. I mean, if you want us to talk about it, we can talk about it. I mean, it's never, it's fine.
Okay.
It was clean water that accidentally pumped onto their land.
Well, if it was clean, it couldn't have been clean water. Pardon me. It couldn't have been clean water because the whole purpose for pumping it was because the water wasn't clean in the first place. Okay, they were pumping it in order to clean it.
So we heard their concerns and
Okay.
those were brought up at Conservation.
Well, I want you to be aware of it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Someone know what's going on with this?
The krolls?
Yeah, hi. Steve Cole, 78th.
Are you, are you able to speak up and also try to keep it pertinent to the planning board and any new information?
So we are, we're very concerned about the WIC pipes and creating a serious erosion on our property, doing what it's doing to the other locations, even worse than it over here. So we just want to, I'm still waiting for details, but concentrated flow, we're taking sheeting flows and we're turning into the concentrated flows and just creating a wave.
Yeah, I don't know, can you speak up louder or more into your microphone?
I am speaking very loud.
It's not coming over on our end, so.
It's a problem with the system.
Okay.
All right, just forward comments, concerns in an email to either the Conservation Committee, Brandon, or Matt and I with, with us here. Thank you.
All right.
Anything else from the board?
I mean, I just wanted to state that it's very difficult, if I may, through the chair. We had, you know, these two rains, it's easy to blame that only because there's other extenuating circumstances, but up at the, the cubes, big problem there with the rains. Down in Plainville, Madison Energy, all over the news, same things happened there, exactly what's happened to you guys. And that's been all over, actually, national news for that one, so it's been a difficult time for everybody.
I would, I'd just like to ask that if, if there are issues such as this that have occurred, they should be on this status report. We should include any items or issues that have occurred so that we're aware of that, so that, you know, again, we're all hearing the same dialogue.
About the chronology.
Yeah, well, their concerns of something that occurred, that's not, I don't believe that's listed here in terms of that failure for the swale and water that ended up in their, on their property.
We will add that.
That would be appreciated, yeah.
Yep.
And also we're trying to prevent issues, but if there's issues that come up between meetings, just forward those issues to the development director, the community development office, or the Conservation Committee office. So they can look at it and send it off to parties that need to be aware of it. Mr. Sutker?
Mike Sutker, 46 Oak Street. I know that we're starting to do all these reports now. What about all the water damage and reports from the very beginning that really started all this? Has that all been documented, laid out with the photos? Anybody know? It all started a long time, but right now we're catching, I want to say towards the tail end, but this really started months ago with a lot of damage to a lot of us. So those reports, I think, should be at the top of the list, along with everything else, proving how this has all transpired in a time span, so everybody can see how long this has been going on. And I think, if I may, to the chair, to Matt, pictures going to hand started quite a while ago. I'm going to say four months.
We have those documented, Mr. Chairman. So we have those on record.
So there could be a chronological history at some point made up from here to where we're at now. we're at now, and the time span this has been going on. Thank you. I think it would be important to show everybody how long we've been talking about it and beating our heads about it.
That's all we can, maybe? It's all publicly available.
Yeah.
True, but we're talking about making a record of how this is going along. The chair, I agree.
Yeah.
But there should be a document made up on the progress from the beginning. Everything's public record. It's scattered all over the place. This should all be in a binder from day one, when it all really started, to where we are now, so everybody can see, public record wise, how long and what's been going on from day one. Right now, it's scattered.
We'll take it.
It's all in the file.
Yeah, we got a file. Thank you. All right, moving along. Any other ongoing developments?
I'm back.
I don't believe so. I don't believe so.
Have you heard anything from Sutton, Douglas Development?
Oh, yes, actually I have.
Oh.
Yeah. They were supposed to transfer the open space as part of their condition by December of 2023. They hadn't done that, so we reached out, and they are going to get on that before they move forward the project. They're looking at starting this summer.
Oh, they are, they are going forward with it.
Yes, yes. So, but that's all I have for an update. One of the, one of the neighbors from Conservation have brought that to my condition to my attention, so we asked them about it, and that's what they started working on. So we asked them to transfer the open space prior to the start of the development.
Anything else? Is Gilboa Court extension still going on?
That's a good question.
Because that was originally a duplex that turned, yeah, it wasn't approved. I don't even know.
It was approved, a single failure.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's an approved project. I'm not sure where that lies. I'll check into that.
That was four years ago now.
I expect Sleepy Hollow will be submitting a road acceptance come, well, prior to the October deadline for next Springtown meeting.
You just said they're possibly starting up in the summer.
No, they said to transfer over the open space first, and we're hoping to get that for the Springtown meeting so we can accept it, but it might not be in in time. Maybe we'll accept it in the fall. We'll see.
Coming in through the wall.
Right. That's all I have.
Any staff updates?
No.
Any further, have they moved into the building?
Which one?
Try to count, or they're taking 40,000 square feet.
Oh, I'm not sure. I'm not sure. I don't know. Could have asked that to Bob when he was here.
We've even had minutes in a couple meetings.
Yeah, we are, we're looking into that also. Our minutes taker's been falling behind in a lot of minutes.
Okay.
But I will.
It's been noticeable.
Yeah, it is. So.
How far back are we?
Quite. Several meetings.
All right. And no signature, is there signatures? Yeah, just stick around, spend minutes around for signatures. All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Made by Mr. Zwick, second to Mr. Sokrat. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.